Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the 2017 San Anselmo Town Council Candidate Forum. I'm Doug Kelly. I'm the Vice President of the San Anselmo Chamber of Commerce. The President is Benedetto Chico, who's in Italy on business. He owns the San Anselmo Inn. He's getting more people to come to San Anselmo, so I'm honored to step in. First off, I want to thank you all for coming tonight. I want to thank the candidates for their willingness to come. And I want to introduce our moderator from the Marin IJ, Dick Spotswood.[34.47][34.47][applause] The sequence will be as follows. Each of the candidates will have a two-minute opening, and then there'll be questions. Dick will handle all of the questions. The Chamber did send questions to Dick. I compiled them from other Chamber members. No other Chamber member saw the questions. Certainly none of the candidates saw any of the questions. I only sent it to Dick, and he can ask whatever he wants and not ask whatever he wants. I will be wandering around with pads and pens. If you want to ask a question, just flag me down. Again, there's no guarantee that Dick will ask that question, but flag me down to get the pen and to have it picked up. After the questions start, they're going to start with Seat 1 and go on. The second question will go to Seat 2. The third question will start at Seat 3. There will also be a two-minute closing. With that, I'd like to just introduce the candidates. At the end, Tom King, John Wright, Steve Burdo, Kay Coleman, and Brian Colbert. With that, Dick, it's all yours.
Great, thank you, Doug. And Doug, somebody in the audience just asked me if we could turn the lights up just a bit so they could write their notes on it, if we could. And if you do have cards, at some point in time, somebody's going to come around and ask for you to hand in your cards. We'll bring them up here, and I'll ask some questions. Well, folks, welcome. The Chamber of Commerce is Candidates Night. It's a pleasure to have five first-rate candidates. Four, you were at the Independent Journal today, and I just met the fifth tonight, so it's good to see you again. Let's start off. I've just heard it's going to be by seating order, so let's go, Mr. Colbert.
Is the mic on?
Yeah.
Oh, great, wonderful. Good evening. My name is Brian Colbert, and I'd like to thank the San Anselmo Chamber for organizing this forum. I've lived in Marin for the past seven years and in San Anselmo for the past four years with my wife and seven-year-old daughter that attends the second grade at Wade Thomas Public Elementary School. I'm a graduate of the University of Chicago Law School. I grew up in a small town in Connecticut outside of New York City, and I've lived in New York, Chicago, San Francisco, and Turkey. I've traveled extensively throughout North America, North Africa, Southeast Asia, and Europe. I'm seasoned, having been a Wall Street corporate attorney for five years, taught international law, political theory, and political science in Turkey, and served on the Board of Calico, a nonprofit serving children in Alameda. I'm an entrepreneur, launching several successful ventures. My latest is co-founding a direct wellness practice in San Francisco. I'm solid in San Anselmo, having served as Chair of the San Anselmo Economic Development Committee for the past three years, which has allowed me to connect with a variety of stakeholders, including local consumers, business owners, and landlords. I've spoken with current council members, including Kay Coleman, John Wright, and Tom McInerney, former council members Carla Overberger and Doug Kelly, and longtime Town Manager Debbie Stutzman and current Town Manager Dave Donrhy, to gain perspective on the history, opportunities, and challenges facing the town. I've garnered more than 20 endorsements, all from within our community, including the Marin Firefighters and the Ross Valley Fire Department. My professional experience in the private sector and nonprofit sectors demonstrates I can bring a variety of stakeholders with different, even conflicting agendas together. As a parent of a child of the Ross Valley School District, I understand and I'm connected to the turbulence affecting San Anselmo in general and young families in particular. I live it every day. I am perplexed by the questions that have surrounded my commitment to our public schools. I am the only parent with a school-aged child that is making a commitment and devoting time to run for Town Council. If elected, I hope to serve as liaison from the Town Council to the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.[278.82][278.82][applause]
Hi. Thank everybody for coming. I'm Kay Coleman, and I am the current Mayor of San Anselmo. I've lived here for 45 years, and my boys grew up here, went to Wade Thomas, went to Drake High School. And during the eight years I've been on the council and the almost 10 years that I was a Community Resources Director for the town, my focus has always been on creating and enhancing the feeling of community in San Anselmo. That's why we live here. It's hard work being a councilperson. If you do it right, you're constantly in contact with your constituents, listening, observing, acting on their behalf, encouraging their participation, and helping them realize they live in a special place. We have our challenges in San Anselmo, but I know we can deal with them together. This is what I'm about, encouraging civic engagement and participation in our community. It's what I am and what I do. I'm proud of my endorsements from the Ross Valley Fire, Marin Firefighters, and also the Central Marin Police. So, thank you for coming and thanks for your engagement.
Thank you, Kay.[356.94][356.94][applause] Steve Burdo.
It's great to see so many people here tonight. Thank you to the Chamber for hosting this event. My name is Steve Burdo, and I'm the Vice Chair of the San Anselmo Parks and Recreation Commission. I bring over a decade of service to San Anselmo. Since the moment I moved to town, I became cutely involved in our community. First, with civic groups such as Sustainable San Anselmo, and later stepped up my engagement as a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission, where I played a key role in helping Lisa Graham to bring the skate plaza to Memorial Park. I've also served on the Community Facilities Master Plan Advisory Committee and the Memorial Park Master Plan Advisory Board. I bring nearly two decades of local government and public policy experience in the unique perspective of somebody who works in local government and understands both ends of the politics-administration dichotomy. Moreover, I have a passion and a belief in local government and a strong track record in bringing diverse stakeholders together to address complex issues. My priorities include maintenance and planning for our roads, parks, and town facilities, public safety and flood protection, open space preservation, prudent fiscal oversight, and economic sustainability so that we can continue to support a fresh and thriving downtown and improve basic services. I'm proud of the many endorsements my candidacy has received, including the Marin Professional Firefighters, the Marin Democratic Party, and the Sierra Club, to name a few. I bring a wealth of experience, passion, and dedication to the table and look forward to working together to ensure our town remains vibrant, family-friendly, and safe. You can learn more about me at burdoforSanAnselmo.com, and I look forward to the discussion tonight.
Steve, thank you.[455.62][455.62][applause] John Wright.
All right, this is on? Yes, thanks. So, I'm John Wright, and I'm a 27-year resident of San Anselmo. My wife and I and three sons moved out from San Francisco 27 years ago. I would be remiss, actually, if I didn't first thank my wife for putting up with me for 21 years doing school board and Town Council work, because it's not a glamorous task. It's hard work. It requires a lot of long meetings late into the night. It requires reaching consensus and being collaborative with people. I'm anxious to serve another three years. These are short terms this time around, but I'm very interested in serving for another three years and possibly even beyond that if my wife doesn't divorce me first, because I think I have a lot to bring to the town in terms of some of the current challenges the town faces. My reputation, I think, is for somebody that is effective, can get things done. I have, I think, a very good track record of accomplishments in actually achieving tangible things. Red Hill Community Park, Measure D, the sales tax measure several years ago, have had very tangible results, I think, to the quality of life in the town. The work on the council is difficult. There are surprisingly, there are issues ranging from rather small, at least in a global sense, but very big to the neighbors that might be disputing a planning decision. And we have much more significant issues to deal with. Flood control is certainly top of the list. We'll get into this more tonight. Infrastructure improvements, traffic, we need to certainly do more about in downtown. And I think we'll be getting into more of that tonight. And I think I'm somebody, based on my track record, that can really contribute to the successful future for the town. Thank you.[580.82][580.82][applause]
Thank you, and thank you all for coming tonight. It's terrific to see democracy in action here. My name's Tom King. I'm the newcomer here. I'm going on my second year in San Anselmo, but I know Marin very well. My family's lived here since 2003, 15 years. My son went through the Tiburon Public Schools and went on to Redwood High, where my daughter also attended. I'm a writer, and I'm also very involved in the charity world for the past few decades. As the founder and president of the first and only charity to ever offer donors a money-back guarantee, I believe I have a good balance, a good sense of balance of a private sector focused on accountability and results with a public nonprofit commitment on empathy and compassion. I'm running for Town Council because I believe we can and should make improvements, improvements for our health, environment, our seniors, and our overall community. I support expanding democracy with term limits, term limits of one term only for elected officials. No reelections. Public financing of elections and lowering the voting age to 15, a permanent solution to our flooding issue, lowering the sales tax and other ideas to help our local merchants, improving traffic with a roundabout at the hub and a parking garage downtown, protecting our most vulnerable seniors who live alone, better protecting our pets, improved pedestrian and bike safety, a ban on smoking, except in one's home, no GMOs, no fluoride in our water, and about 75 more ideas at my website, tomking2017.com. I believe democracy and a candidate's platform should be both specific and innovative. Thank you very much.
Tom King, thank you.[680.22][680.22][applause] Well, folks, we're going to go into questions now. These came from the Chamber, though I've changed a few wording here and there and perhaps the order as well. Let me explain the timing of this and the procedure. First of all, the timing is one minute per candidate, if we could. Same rules with the timer on the audience. The annoying timer will last again after one minute. We'll do it. We try to do everything in the same order, reverse order, so that every folks, all the folks get the chance to go first, last, or in between. Likewise, when we finish tonight, whoever was first shall be last. It's a biblical aspect of this. So, that will be followed. Since Tom King went last, he will start the first question, and it relates to business improvement. Vitality of the town's business districts is essential for a thriving, active community. What steps would you take to attract and to retain new businesses in San Anselmo? Tom.
It's a great question. First, we have to deal with high rents. I don't know if anyone here can deal with that. Even if we ask nicely, I don't know if landlords will lower rents. A few weeks ago, I went by downtown, spoke to as many owners and managers as I could, and many complained about high rents. That's one issue. Traffic is another. I'd like to put a parking garage in town-owned property right adjacent to Imagination Park, a two-story one. I'd like to prohibit owners and employees from stores downtown, from parking downtown, so our consumers can shop there more easily. There's many other ideas in terms of businesses. And, you know, please visit my website, tomking2017.com. The one-minute red thing is going right now, but I have many ideas online. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. John.
Well, consistent with my focus on pragmatic and doable solutions, I've been serving on the Economic Development Commission for four years now. Brian Colbert has been the Chair of that. And in fact, we're working on some, we have an action plan now that is very much focused on creating a framework for successful business downtown. It's clear that there are some issues in terms of vacancies. I think there's a lot of problems in retail generally, regardless of where you are, but we have some very specific plans that we are working on. The town recently authorized a real parking study. There is parking downtown. It's just not obvious where it is. A signage is another problem. We have a very exciting plan that's being done pro bono by somebody on our Economic Development Committee to actually come up with a signage program that I think would significantly help business downtown. So, we have quite a few actions underway, and I'm optimistic that we'll be able to achieve them.
David. Or, yes, Steve.
Steve.
Oh, Steve, excuse me.
I think I'm still Steve. I think the action plan is a good start. However, when we talk about attracting and retaining businesses, we need to talk about flood mitigation. That is one of the biggest factors in terms of our downtown in particular that is a roadblock. Businesses are scared to come into town because of the threat of flooding every winter. Our current businesses have to wonder every winter if they're going to need to close their doors because of the flooding. The county took a good step a couple of weeks ago to make some improvements there, but that's going to take some time. And so, we need to do what we can do as a town to address the issue of flooding. I also think that we need to take a strategic eye towards the businesses that are coming into town. We got to make sure that we don't have businesses competing with other businesses for the very limited amount of space that we have in town to attract new business. So, those would be my primary two things.
Thank you. Thanks, Steve. Kay.
My colleague, Matt Brown, made the remark the other night at a council meeting that retail is dead as we knew it. There are no shops for boy shoes, hardware stores, et cetera, in downtown that were here when I first came. I think it's changed, and I'm very excited by what I see downtown. I see new owners who are willing to step up and meet with each other and confer and decide. We have no jurisdiction over who moves into a business. That is determined legally by other people. The Economic Development Committee has done a great job with their survey. The town is trying to do as much as we can to encourage it and to meet with owners and to find, thank you, and to find results and management for flooding. The medians have to be improved. The signage has to be improved. But, you know, we can do it. We've done it before, and we can. Now, you all have to get coordinated, huh? Okay. He says I have five seconds. He says I don't. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kay. Brian.
As I said in my opening, I'm the Chair of the Economic Development Committee. And the committee's approach has been, what can the town do as a framework to enable entrepreneurs to succeed in downtown? Downtown business has been a challenge in this country since the 1960s. And my focus is chaired along with the committees who's been, what can we execute, what can we evaluate, and then what can we iterate to see what successes we have, what can we learn and move forward? So, I think the meaningful things that we've done is we've moved away from a sort of anecdotal, well, I think this, to this is what the merchants think, this is what the consumers think, and then what can we do to help them? So, in that regard, over the last four years, we've done a number of quantitative surveys, which have led us to, one, a parking study, as John mentioned. We've, right now, currently putting on a series of marketing seminars to enable businesses that want to take advantage of that to go and learn how to enable their own entrepreneurial skills to succeed and flourish. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Second question. Local control is the question, and John Wright will be starting with you this time. How do you plan to keep local control in place, particularly in relation to housing, defending our community from the marching orders from the non-elected regional alphabet agencies? How do you plan to keep local control in San Anselmo?
That's a very timely issue, question, because of some very recent changes in state law. We just had a lot of local control taken away from us through a package of bills that were just signed by the governor, including SB 35, which is a very significant intrusion into local control. The council unanimously agreed to send a letter too late to the governor to ask him to veto the law, but I think, given the mandates that are upon us from San Anselmo, or from Sacramento, rather, I think that the best we're going to be able to do is ensure that we have as inclusive a process as possible to get as much local input as we can within the limited parameters that the state now allows us, because in fact, there's really, it's been, it's a very significant change now in state law that's going to really restrict how much local control we can actually have. So, we'll do what we can, but I'm sure, I think a lot of it's been taken away from us frankly.
Great, thank you, John. Steve.
Yeah, I agree that SB 35 impedes local control. I think, you know, when we're looking at this issue, particularly when it comes to regional bodies, they should be there to guide, not to mandate. And as a local employee myself, I work for Contra Costa County, we always find ourselves in these kind of regional battles with these regional agencies. I'm more of a proponent for local control and local government. As I said in my opening, I have a passion and a belief in local government, and I believe we have the tools to address the challenges and opportunities in our community right here. You know, I think those regional bodies are good as kind of a guiding light in the goals that we should be shooting for, but when it comes to mandating numbers into communities, that's been something that I think we could see from experience has not been swallowed very well in Marin. And so, I would want to be an advocate, if chosen to serve on those boards, but I would be an advocate for local control.
Thanks, Steve. Kay.
San Anselmo is a small town. 5,000 households, 12,000 people. And throughout the country, we are losing local control. And I can tell you that as we battle it on the council and say, okay, what can we provide? Can we do second units? Can we do auxiliary units? What are the parameters that we can work around what they're telling us? It's very, very difficult. It keeps coming down and coming down. Okay, you will create more low-income housing, more moderate-income housing, but they don't tell us how to do it, and they don't give us the money to do it. It's very, very difficult. We're under heavy restriction. The more we study it, the more we're aware that we have very, very little jurisdiction. Interesting thing is that the developers are not interested in small amounts of housing. They want big places where they can get their money back. So, it's been hard to attract developers. Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. Brian.
I think with regards to San Anselmo, I think the residents and I myself are a huge believer in local control, particularly when it comes to housing. That said, we are part of a larger community, and the challenge is, how do we resolve the tension between wanting to work with our neighbors and still retain our own character? I feel, as talking with young families, I think the real challenge is, how do we communicate the faces, the forces that we're facing? And is there something that we as a community can do and explain why the council is focusing on this? When we have limited time and limited energy, we have to take our priorities from the community and also from these regional bodies. I've been to some conferences with regional bodies as an observer, and I do think there's interesting and valuable information, for instance, that I've learned about downtowns across the Bay Area and what successful strategies are. So, I think it's a thoughtful approach, but I do believe that we do have to strongly push for local control, particularly housing. Thank you.
Brian, thank you. Tom King.
Thanks. This is a very important question. Is it on? Thanks. Local control is essential. And I think what we need to do is head off the government encroachment in our community by building affordable housing. Right now, we're going to get more and more pressure. John mentioned that the myriad of bills the governor signed relating to affordable housing, which is just a week ago. It's immense. You should check it out. So, I think really that we can take the offensive. We can build affordable housing. We do have space. But we can do it. You know, Kay mentioned that the government doesn't give any information on how to do it. Well, I have a suggestion, but I think it can be a public-private partnership. I think we can please both sides. We can please Realtors and developers by just making smaller units with two or three bedrooms, because a lot of families with two children cannot afford a million-dollar home. So, there should be just smaller units, and so on a per-square-footage basis, as the Realtors are still getting their rent. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Third question is going to be regarding public employee pensions, and Steve Burdo, it'll be your turn to start off. Public employee pensions and the unsustainable deficit they sometimes face are critical to San Anselmo's future. Are you ready to pledge a real commitment to reduce public employee pension cost to the town of San Anselmo, and if so, how?
Thank you. Well, I think one thing that's important to start with is that San Anselmo's pension liability is sustainable at the moment. And we were one of the first cities in Marin County to actually take action on that. So, I think, you know, through the leadership in our town with our former Town Manager and our current Town Manager, I think that, you know, we're in a very good position. Again, I have a unique perspective on this. I'm a public employee, and I'm a public employee who started my employment post-2013, after the reform in the pension area happened. And so, you know, as I look to this, I think, you know, we have to look at two sides of this. One of them is that we need to be able to attract skilled workers into the public sector. The reason why I work in the public sector is because they have the benefits, like the pension and the health care. And health care is so very, very important these days, especially with what's going on at the national level. So, I'm an advocate for pensions, but I'm an advocate for sustainable pensions, and I think the town's done a really good job.
Thank you, Steve. This time, we're going to start with Kay. And Kay, the question...
Wait, 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 wait. I get to talk about the financials.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I jumped the ball.
Okay, so will you all restart?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. One of the great things that's happened in San Anselmo happened when we consolidated our police departments with the Twin Cities. We reduced the amount that we have in our budget dedicated to that. And if you look at the 10-year cycle, you'll see that we are just, we are just holding our own as to where we were 10 years ago, and it's really great. The Tier 1 started at 2.7 at 55. So, then in 1909, we went to Tier 2, which was 2% at 55. Now, we're at, as of '13, we're at Pepper, what's called Public Employment's Retirement, and that's 2% at 62. We pay the required contribution to the general fund. It's about 2% of our budget, but we're holding our own, and our employees have to pay a larger share. So, we're doing much better than a lot of places, and we were first out, so we're proud of that.
Sorry about that. Kay, Brian.
So, pensions are another macro issue in which San Anselmo is sort of being buffered along with every other community. I appreciate the move that the town made back in 2007 to move to a two-tier system. And I think there's actually sort of three big questions. One is, to what extent can we keep the promises that have been made and people rely on? What are the new promises that we can make to our new employees? And I think the other third thing is, you know, what can we reasonably expect from the families living in San Anselmo? I appreciate the sacrifices that our public sector employees make, and they're great. They're wonderful people, and they're hardworking. But at the same time, our residents themselves are under financial pressure. So, the conversation that I think has to be had is, what can we reasonably do so that we're all sustainable and all our costs of livings are able to happen here in San Anselmo? Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Tom.
Thank you. This is a critical, critical issue. I wish we lived in a world where everyone had pensions, not just the public sector, but that's not the world we inhabit. It used to be. I think we should make sure, you know, ensure that the top pensions, you know, the strong pensions, no change whatsoever for our active-duty police and fire. No question there. They should absolutely get everything they deserve. Other than that, I think maybe we can have even a Tier 3. We can keep going, because administratively, you know, there's no guarantees. And, you know, a company rises and falls, and employee is part of that company. Contracts get broken all the time. Marriage contracts, unfortunately, is one example. I mean, no one goes into a marriage thinking it's going to fail. So, I mean, things happen in business just like in life, and I do think public employees, administrative side, can be a little more flexible. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. John.
Thanks. Yeah, it is an important issue. I would agree with some of the things that Steve and Kay said, that in fact, San Anselmo has done a pretty good job. And beyond what was already mentioned, there's also in San Anselmo a cap on the retirement health benefit at a fairly modest amount. And we're actually in very good shape in terms of future health liabilities because of that negotiated arrangement from some time ago. Secondly, we're again looking at, we're not done in trying to get our hands around this issue. The town right now is doing a study to look to refinance some of the pension obligations by issuing a low-interest bond that would allow us to prepay some of the obligations and thus reduce the cost. So, we're always actively looking at dealing with the pension obligations. I agree with Brian that we have to be mindful of the burden on the totality of the taxpayers, but in fact, we're doing some things and have already accomplished some things.
Thank you. Good timing. Let's go to the next question. It's number four. Kay, this is where I got off the wrong track here, but we're on now with you, and you'll go first on the question of Ross Valley Charter Schools. Of course, the issue of the Ross Valley Charter Schools is not within the purview of the Town Council, but there's been a bitter rift in town. Is there anything you can think of to help heal the rift?
That's a big question. The time my boys went to public schools, one... have profited by an alternative school. I think the time for discussion, we took the pledge at the town council last week about sitting down and talking. There's so much in this question that we're not in charge of. The legislature, devos, have all said what we will do. And yet, there is a chance for us to sit down and talk about it and talk about how we can make things better. We need to contact our legislators and tell them how we feel about it.
Thanks, Kay. Brian, heal the rift is the question.
Well, I actually, I alluded to this early at the beginning. I'm the only person on stage that will be in council with a child. And so I get asked about this all the time. And my answer has been what I'll share with you now, is basically through my personal conduct. When I go out and I knock door to door and I meet people on the street, I ask them, what do they care about in San Anselmo? I care about representing everyone, and I'm running to represent all parents of all school-aged children. Open space, pedestrian safety, that's what matters. I don't care where your child goes to school, but those issues deeply resonate with me. As Kay said, this issue is related to the state and it's related to other things, but that's how I think I can make an immediate incredible difference in addition to being a liaison from the council. I care about what goes on outside the classroom, and I deeply care about what goes on inside the classroom.
Thank you, Brian. Tom?
Thank you. I'm a very big fan of charter schools, charter, alternative, and homeschooling. I homeschooled my son for two years in middle school. I think more choice, the better. I don't have a knee-jerk reaction to public schools. I don't think all teachers are great. I've met some very mediocre ones. There are some terrific ones, but not all. I think this is a critical issue. Again, the more choice, the better with schooling. And I'd also like to see, and this, of course, is not a town council issue, but I do have it on my website, I'd like to see webcams in every classroom, not to monitor our kids, but to monitor our teachers. I'd like to know what they're teaching us, what they're saying about critical issues, historical facts as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. John?
Yeah, it's a very sensitive topic, clearly, in the community right now. I'm deeply aware of it, having been involved with schools as long as I have been. And I would hope that nobody would doubt my commitment to public education, because I was on public school boards for 17 years. My kids all went through Wade Thomas, White Hill, and Drake. I think it's really very sad, what's the division that's taken place in the community. I would personally hope that we would be able to move beyond this, because these are children and parents that are part of the community. We may all have our disagreements about exactly how the charter law is worded in California. I have qualms myself about the ability of the state board to override local decisions, but that's the law. And the charter went through the process. I think it's time to heal those wounds and move beyond that. I would like to see those signs come down, because I think that adds to the division. And I think we just need to move on and let people live their lives peacefully.
John, thank you. Steve?
Yeah. You know, as the brother of a public school teacher and somebody, you know, going to public schools, I have my own personal opinions on this issue. However, I think the level of discourse of communication in the community has really reached a level where we need to kind of take a step back and employ, you know, a little empathy and compassion. We always need to remember that at the heart of all this are children. I've spoken with, you know, friends of mine who are on both sides of this issue, and I think, you know, they have their own opinions on this. I think that what we need is a healing process, whereas, you know, we take a beat for a minute, you know, at this point, the process is going to play out the way it's playing out right now. But we could start having more healing discussions if we, again, employ empathy, compassion, and always remember that it's the kids first.
Thanks, Steve. Brian, we're going to have, you start off this time. And the question's going to be marijuana. State law has changed, and as of January 1st, California legalized recreational use of marijuana. What are your views on recreational marijuana in terms of business, schools, community, and in general, in regard to commercial sales in San Anselmo?
Will we stop a minute for this? Okay, that's fine. So I'm not going to cover everything in a minute. I've spoken on this before council. I think it's important that we really engage the parents of young families, because in San Anselmo, which is so small, a dispensary with retail sales would be very close to downtown, would be very close to schools, or school-like institutions. And by that, I mean places like the Stapleton Ballet or the Dojo. And I really think that parents need to be aware of that and weigh in. I think that delivery businesses and outdoor growing are things of a different nature, which also require serious thought. The other thing, which I've sort of been a very strong advocate about, is trying to quantify the actual revenue that one might have. I think what an entrepreneur approaches, you really need to decide and understand, are we talking about a significant impact on a $30 million a year budget, or a material impact? Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, please.
Thanks. Yes, I support a medical marijuana dispensary in town. I do not support one downtown. However, in terms of being close to school, we are in a public school right now as we sit, which has a serious drug problem. A lot of kids take marijuana and other drugs. Drugs are everywhere in this society. And we have a war on drugs, which has failed for 40 years. It's really a war on poor people. So this is a huge issue here. I think we need to be realistic about it. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Yeah, this is fine. Yes. This is, I think, a much more significant issue than the public has realized so far. And in fact, my current view is that we need to take our time to figure out exactly what the impact is going to be. Each town in California, based on the referendum passed last November, is in the same position that we are, trying to figure out exactly where to draw the line. I think we need to take our time, get a lot of public input, see what other towns are doing. Marijuana is not a safe drug for young people. And as others have indicated, we need to really be sure that we're not normalizing the use of marijuana so that it seems to young people that it's perfectly fine, because it's not. And, you know, today's marijuana and edible products in particular are not the same as some of us may have grown up with. It's a completely different, it's a big business industry right now. And I just think we need to take our time so people can really understand the impacts.
Thanks, Rob.
Yeah, so through my job, I was placed in this leadership academy this year for Contra Costa County, where we had to research this issue and present to the city managers and county administrator about how each city in the county should go about implementing or prohibiting recreational cannabis. So what we found in our research was that there were both challenges and opportunities. And of course, there's a lot of economic development opportunities, but there were also a lot of challenges. Like, many people don't know that it is a 100% cash business. Because of federal regulations, most dispensaries, manufacturers, and cultivators cannot bank with FDIC banks. So that's something, from a law enforcement perspective, we need to get a handle on. What I'm in favor of now is for the town council to take action before January 1st, 2018, to allow us to remain, keep local control, so that we could have this discussion in our community. It's not going to be a short discussion. We're going to have a long discussion about this. But what we also found in our research was, most of the places that did this did this through the ballot. And so it's going to be our job to make sure that we educate the community so that they have the information to make the right decision when the time comes.
Thanks, Steve. Kay?
I've been to three, four meetings around this subject. League of California Cities, I attended the Bar Association lunch the other day on this. It has all kinds of reasons to hold up. Wait, let's just take it easy. And so that's what the council has done. We've said we're just doing moratorium. We've approved the six plans for personal growth. But I know that the train is coming someday. However, it's being held up in the courts. I know that the CHP is devising methods for testing for marijuana when you're driving. There are three agencies that are connected with the licensing of it, business, growth, and public health. So they have been advised to start with the non-volatile part of it. So there's a medical marijuana place in Fairfax, and we can use that for delivery. Thank you.
Kay, thank you. The next question, and we're going to start bringing, mixing some of the questions we have from the chamber with questions from the audience. The next question is from the audience, but I won't distinguish them. They'll just come. But I want to let you know, we're now bringing in some of the folks that have sent up their carts. And thank you for doing that. And we'll try to integrate your questions in and answer as many as we can. Tom, you're the next online to start it off. It's an easy question, because it's the questionnaire says, it says yes or no from each. Have you or will you sign the civility pledge called Elevate the Discussion?
Great question, even though you're looking for one word. I'd like to expand it. Do I have a minute?
Sure.
Okay.
But it'd be, start off with the yes or the no.
Yes. I already have. In fact, I think I was one of the first ones to do it prior to the consultant or the representative speaking at the board in the August 12 meeting. This is critical. I don't have to get into federal politics. If you just turn on the TV or CNN.com or wherever, you see our current administration acting in an uncivil way. This is teaching our children very poor manners. We need to go back to respect. We have, clearly, we have differences of opinion on this panel and in Congress and in all elected bodies, but we're not going to get anywhere or make any progress whatsoever unless we're civil. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. John?
Yes and yes. I also signed it before the council actually took action at the last meeting to endorse it as a council. I think the reason for this, as Tom indicated, is that I think there are a number of controversies locally, not to mention nationally, where many of us have witnessed disagreement in an uncivil way. I would make note that a lot of it takes place on social media, which is unfortunately not always a positive influence on public discourse, because people can often kind of hide behind the anonymity of social media. And I think that's actually been a bad thing. It's far better, I think, for people to bring their concerns to public meetings and talk to people face-to-face, where I think the tendency to demonize and dehumanize people is often much less. So that can still happen at some public meetings, and there's been examples of that, not so much in front of our council, but I know in front of other bodies. So I think that civility pledge is very timely.
Steve?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Of course. Have you, yes or no, please, have you or will you sign the civility pledge called Elevate the Discussion?
I've yet to see the pledge. So I would love to take a look at it before I pledge to anything. I think, you know, when we talk about the level of discourse that we're seeing at all levels of government, I think certainly at the national level, it's something that is really appalling at the moment. As somebody who's worked in public policy for, you know, nearly two decades, I think that, you know, it's very upsetting to see some of the words coming out of the mouth of our commander-in-chief. You know, I, it's hard for me to really, you know, even get to the, get to the heart of what motivates somebody to come from that point of view. And it's hard to explain what it does to you when you receive it. But I think what we need to do is start locally and start setting that example locally. But I would love to see the pledge, and I'll come into signing it or not signing it once I see it.
The pledge says, "I pledge to discuss challenging community issues with thoughtfulness, to treat peoples whose opinions I differ from mine with respect, and to focus on ideas, policies, and solutions. I will encourage others to do the same. I will speak up and publicly object when I hear name-calling, stereotypes, disparaging comments, and slurs. I will do this because our community's health and social well-being is important to me, and I know that we cannot effectively deal with challenging problems without these commitments."
And who sponsored, who puts that out?
Well, that's, we'd have to check that. I think the question is, do you support the words, or do you support...
If we're talking about the words, yes. I absolutely support those words. I'd like to know who is sponsoring the pledge before I sign it.
I can tell you, because it's going to be my column on Sunday, there's a list of 427 Mernites who have pledged, signed the pledge. It's on there.
It's my turn.
Kay?
Gentlemen, when it was brought to the council, we read it, and it was something that we knew that we believed in. My take on it was, is this not what we're teaching our children? Isn't this what we say on the kindergarten playground? When you have a problem with somebody, you go and talk to them about it. You don't name-call. You talk to them about it, and you tell them what is okay with you and what is not okay with you. So that's why we signed it. And I would like to see it printed large and put on every chamber, every council chamber in Marin. I would like to see all the other councils sign this too, because it really signifies the way we want our children to be and the way that we want to act. Thank you.
Thanks, Kay. Brian?
Yeah, there's an interesting backdrop to this, particularly since you're moderating this evening, Dick. You've sort of, I read your column, and you said that you're going to sort of call out the people that don't sign it, which I find sort of an interesting position to take, that there's a pledge, or you're going to determine who should or should not have signed the pledge. I'm sympathetic to Wesley Pratt's position that he wrote to the IJ. That said, I have been at two council meetings, and I heard someone from Elevate come and speak, and she was incredibly eloquent, and I'm certainly sympathetic. I said earlier that I attempt to conduct myself in my own personal life according to principles that resonate with that. I don't need to sign a pledge. As an entrepreneur myself, I believe that a lot of the conversation takes place on social media, and my initial reaction is, you should build a new platform that addresses those concerns. So I'm going to have to say, in that particular context, I'm not going to sign the pledge.
Thank you, Brian. You're absolutely right. I did call him out, and that's what I do. Let's go to the next one. We're going to go on with, I think this is going to be John Wright. John, traffic. Tell us how you see the traffic issues in San Anselmo, and do you have any thoughts to improve traffic flow?
Sure. Well, traffic, I think, is both a macro issue in the sense that there's a lot of things going on that we can't control, like the health of the economy. And there's some micro issues of things that we actually can do in San Anselmo. And in fact, we have been doing some things. I'll be specific. We, a few months ago, we opened up at John Commune Hour, the right westbound lane at the hub, right in front of the Chinese restaurant, to clear some of that traffic jam. So that has helped. I think the Safe Roots to Schools program that the council has been very supportive of has been helpful in that regard. You know, we're trying to get kids out of their parents' cars and onto bikes. I've also been the representative to the Yellow Bus program and working with the Ross Valley School District to get kids into school buses out to White Hill. So we're doing some very specific things. So I think we can do some things at a micro level.
Thank you, John. Steve?
So yeah, from the traffic perspective, I think we need better, smarter public transportation, first of all, particularly on the East West Corridor. You know, we have these buses that are running, which are energy-efficient, which is great, but I think we need to think smaller and more efficient. You know, we, the rider, we don't have the ridership for the buses or to justify increasing the bus service. So we need to think smaller and smarter, and I think we can do that. The county has done that at their level. They've tested that out. I know other local models that have been really successful. But one of the other things we need to talk about when we talk about traffic is, you know, as I'm knocking on doors and talking to people, the thing I hear a lot about is the traffic, particularly on Sir Francis Drake. I live on Ash Ave, which is right by Drake High and T-Bone's Sir Francis Drake. And every morning, we have high school kids walking to the high school. We have younger kids walking up to Butterfield. And, you know, there's not a lot of sidewalk space, and cars come very, very quickly. We need to do a better job of addressing speeding on our main corridors. And I would look to be a strong advocate to do that.
Steve, thank you. Kay?
Several of the things that John mentioned, I was going to talk about. The right turn onto Greenfield from Sir Francis Drake in the evening has really helped. We've applied for and received... We've applied for and received quite a few grants for the Safe Roots to Schools. We work with the Safe Roots to School Marin County, and it's been very effective. I've seen mothers riding with three kids after them on the way to school. We need more bike lanes around the schools. We need, I, for a senior's transportation, we've got to find a smaller way to put people into vans or to put people into other means of transportation. One of the great things that nobody else knows is that we redid the light at Tamil and San Francisco Boulevard and Sir Francis Drake, so that those kids can cross safely with their bikes and on their way to lunches from Drake and people who are riding their bikes up to San Francisco Boulevard.
Thank you. Brian?
Well, one of the strengths I bring is, I think, is an ability to sort of look long-term and see the macro issues, but, but still focus on the present. Last spring, a child was injured on the way to school here in the Ross Valley, and, you know, I think that sort of demands an immediate focus on pedestrian and bike safety, which is one of the tendencies of my platform. So I think that's one of the things we can do. How can we get children and our seniors and everyone back and forth to school? I mean, San Anselmo, like much of Marin, was just really never geared to handle this much traffic. Long-term, though, however, I think the investments need to be made of what will the transportation patterns look like in the years to come? I mean, that's going to be costly, and I'm a fan of driverless cars. I mean, I think we're here outside of Silicon Valley, I think the future is coming. So I think we need to sort of focus on what can we do in the immediate after, in the immediate challenges of traffic as it relates to bikers, pedestrians, but also are we making investments that will reflect our transportation patterns in the near and far future? Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Tom?
Thanks. I think this is a two-part question. I think there's a local traffic issue for downtown and a more comprehensive traffic issue on 101 and Sir Francis Drake. I'll start with the former. Downtown, I propose alternating one-way streets to ease congestion. I always give credit where credit is due, it's not my idea, it's a very nice man, I met at Imagination Park, I don't recall his name, gave me that. Also, a roundabout, which is very popular in Europe, Latin America, and South America at the hub, I think would be terrific idea. Also, in terms of, and I think I mentioned, you know, a parking garage as well, so to get cars off downtown, and also a ban on owners parking in front of their stores will help. But in terms of the overall view, San Francisco is really the crux of the issue. They need to build more housing for their workers. They're not doing that, so the workers are living here, living far, even further out, you know, in Woodacre or work, and further out to, that's, that's the time thing.
Thank you, Tom. Steve, we're going to start this time with you, and the topic is flood issues. Tell us your plan to mitigate flooding, and how do you feel about the building bridge number two that I'm sure you know is the property of 634-36 San Anselmo Avenue that was proposed to be purchased and demolished?
So I think that was a really good step that was taken by the county a couple of weeks ago. Look, what we need to focus on is real, meaningful flood mitigation, and what that means is that we're not looking at the measures that are going to get us to the 100-year flood event, or even the 50-year flood event. We need to do things like creekside abatement, continue to build in bridge-raising projects and other infrastructure improvements to existing infrastructure projects, which I think the town has been doing a good job of. The flood zone nine plan has over 100 points how we could address this. My priority is to figure out a way to expedite the issues or the points on the plan that are non-controversial, that there's, that there, everybody's in agreement on, let's expedite those. And I'm an advocate for working with homeowners on creekside abatement, and I think continuing to build these projects into our existing infrastructure projects is the way to go. But as I said here earlier, we need to give our businesses and our residents the confidence that the town is going to take action. The county was a good step, it's time for us to put up two.
Thanks, Steve. Kate?
Flooding in San Anselmo is not just a downtown question, and the county bought that building, and the building was going to fall anyway, but that's not the point. If you look under that building and see the concrete that is there, Sean Conry told me the other day that when the water hits there, it backs up 1,000 feet. Now, that's a lot of football fields. So what we're trying to do is to prevent that from happening, and we're doing it with a conservation corps. We're not sitting around waiting for the county, we're doing it as much as we can, and we're helping residents do their floodgates. I don't, you may not know this, but we have sort of a Code Blue staff at the town, and all those people are in action when the water starts to creep up. And they meet with the volunteer, they meet with the owners, and they go around, they help them with their floodgates. So we're going to raise three bridges, where the floodgates are installed, we have special grants for particular neighborhoods, and we can't do harm downstream. Thank you.
Right.
So one of the deep concerns I've heard from residents in talking is, what can the town do to accomplish tangible flood measures? There's a deep frustration among the families. I personally know and feel for all five of those businesses, and I was recently at the town council meeting, and the feedback I got from folks is, we need to do a better job of communicating. People need to understand that the conversation now involves downtown businesses and 500 homes and families. And the questions that I got out of it was, I don't understand the entirety of the plan. I need to understand it better, and if you can help me understand it, well then maybe I'll better understand the trade-offs that we make. So at this point, I fully support the process. I've been involved with it for a year in terms of watching this, so I look forward, if I'm elected to council, on being a translator and leading and listening to the community to sort of see what tangible measure, and if it involves building bridge two. Thank you.
Brian, thank you. Tom?
Thank you. I'm originally from New England, and we have beautiful creeks there as well, but people don't build on top of them. I don't know what people were thinking about 80 years ago here. This is a hydroelectric engineering issue, period. We need a comprehensive plan involving international experts. There's low-lying countries out there, Japan, the Netherlands, they've got cutting-edge technology on flood prevention. It's a 100-year-old problem, it needs to be solved. We can, we can incorporate community ideas, local flood zone ideas, keep everyone apprised of what's going on, and come up with the most comprehensive solutions possible. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Okay, flood control in one minute. So building bridge trip two is the biggest impediment to flood flow, to water flow in the creek. I'm very sympathetic to those businesses, I want everything done to ensure that there's a successful relocation of those businesses, but that building is a big, big problem. Secondly, there is a, there is a, there is a plan, there's been a plan in place for a number of years. I think the problem has been the priorities under the plan. I agree with some of what others have said, that we need to start focusing on more tangible, achievable measures that will give people a sense of confidence that something's actually happening. The biggest, one of the biggest issues I've run into in walking to voters is the, again, the frustration on, you know, where's the progress? It's inherently incredibly complicated process because of so many agencies involved and such a complex mixture of things. So what we need to start doing things that are tangible, so people can see that things are happening, otherwise the public will lose confidence.
Thank you, John. Next question, we're going to start this time with Kate. Kate, what differentiates you from the other candidates? Uh, thank you, Kate, you just answered the question.
First of all, I'm the only woman here. Secondly, I am, I am the one who's on the street, I'm the one who is at Picnics on the Plaza, I started the Gobblins Parade, I started the Beatles, I started the Picnics on the Plaza. I've been having fun, I've been working very, very hard for San Anselmo, and I'm not afraid to say no, and I'm not afraid to say yes. So I've worked hard for the town, and I want to continue working hard, and I'm the only woman, so there.
So I think the thing that, as I said in my opening statement, is I'm the only person with, who'll be, who'll have a school-aged child on council, and I think the voice of those families is paramount, not just to get those families involved, but for the entire legitimacy, the entire political process. I mean, San Anselmo has a number of opportunities and challenges, and they require buy-in from everyone, and if you can't connect with the young families, then you're not really connecting with, with the future of the town. I think the other thing that really separates me is an entrepreneur. I come from the private sector, so my first recourse is not, well, what can government do, or what taxes can we raise? It's sort of, what's a creative solution that can involve folks, that we can measure, execute, iterate, and then learn on? Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Tom?
Thank you. Almost everything is the answer in terms of what differentiates me. I'm the newest member of the community on the panel, I'm the only renter on the panel, so affordable housing is a big deal for me. I'm the only writer, the only person who founded his own charity. Finally, I believe, I'm not positive on this, but I believe I'm the only one whose website, campaign website is very, very specific. I have 85 ideas, please visit TomKing2017.com, and you'll see all of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. John?
Sure. Well, that was kind of a softball question for Kate, Kate, you answered it really well. So I think, I think in terms of substantive issues, with the exception of Mr. King, there's not really a lot of difference between the other four of us. I think we're actually very fortunate this campaign season that we have some, you know, really good candidates. I, in my case, I would say that it's experience, a track record of actually getting things done in the environment, not just promising going to make things done, but actually accomplishing things. The Red Hill Community Park, the Measure D sales tax, and all the road work that was done because of that, the time I spent on, the time I spent on the school boards, there's a national track record, you couldn't go back and see what I've done. So I'm going to go with kind of experience and pragmatism and, you know, a track record of doing things.
Thank you, John. Kate?
Well, first, Tom, you're not the only buddy, you're not the only person to start your own charity. I've started a number of charities, and one that I'm really proud to be working on right now is the Friends of San Anselmo Parks and Recreation. I think one of the things that really sets me apart from the other candidates is that I am a public employee, and I understand both ends of this, from the council-level perspective, as well as where the rubber meets the road and actually, you know, putting those decisions and visions into action. I'm also a communicator, I'm a public information officer for the public safety units in Concha Casa County, and I think, as you heard many of the other candidates say tonight, and we've heard it, you know, throughout, is that local government needs to do a better job of communicating with our residents. We need to do a better job of engaging our residents, and I think being a communicator, particularly one that does that for local government and has, has seen great improvements in how we're implementing new ideas and visions, I think that's something that, that really sets me apart. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Brian, we're going to start with you this time, if that's okay? All five of you are excellent communicators, and the question is communication. Communication is the key to ensuring that San Anselmo residents are informed about town business. What improvements would you suggest to engage more residents in the governance of the town?
I think, I think a few things. The first is the town's got to figure out how to go where people are, where are people gathering. Meetings at eight in the morning and eight or nine do not necessarily work for folks. During the summer, I was the only person in the audience, other than who is a member of council or staff, to talk about our budget, which some might say is actually the most important thing that the town does. And I'm sympathetic to folks. I mean, it's 9:30 at night on a Tuesday night, most of my friends are putting their kids to bed or trying to work after putting their kids to bed. So I think that's one thing that we can do. I know the town is about to roll out a platform called Peak Democracy, which is a technological innovation and will allow people to connect virtually, and while that's interesting, I think in a town like San Anselmo, people still want to be able to figure out how they can talk and meet to, meet people. That's why I declared back in January, so it sort of gave me a time to go out and go to parks and parties and walk the streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Tom?
Thanks. Communication's essential. I mentioned a few weeks back, I walked up and down downtown talking to all the owners, and many of them were surprised. I was surprised to hear that not many incumbents had done that over the years, including now. So that's one issue, not just the merchants, but our residents. I believe a survey went out a few years ago in terms of asking people what the priorities were for our town. I would have handled it differently. It's a small town, we're not San Francisco. I would have gone to Staples, bought a 12-pack of yellow pads, a box of big pens, total cost maybe eight bucks, and just divided everyone. Maybe there's 10 members on the plan, on the economic commission, maybe there's, you know, five members on the panel, on the town council, everyone would have had a different neighborhood to go to. And when you're walking and talking to people, other, other subjects come up, you notice a tree that needs help, you know, that needs repair, you notice sidewalk improvements, maybe they're talking about a neighbor issue. You get involved, that's why I think this should be a full-time paid job, not a part-time volunteer one.
Thank you, Tom. John?
Right. Well, there's no question that we need to do everything possible to increase public engagement. You know, the flood control issues, I think, have been indicative despite efforts over the years by the county and by the town to some extent to do that, it's just, it's really, really hard to get people engaged on important issues. And we've had, we have many, many meetings where we're talking about things that we think are important, and there's nobody there. I'm not, Mr. King may be on to something that we have to go out and kind of pull people in in more aggressive ways. We actually, we have a lot of things that are out there now. We have, starting a few years ago, we started live streaming town council meetings. I get a lot of contact from people actually that watch that, so I think that's been a good thing. We have a town newsletter that goes out to several thousand people. So there's been some pretty good improvement, I think, in the last few years, but there's no question we need to do more, and I'd certainly be open to ideas about how to do that.
Thanks, Steve.
So yeah, perfect segue from my last response, and I think, you know, engagement and communication is the key, and how we do that is, you know, as a few people have said, going to where people are. I think the Peak Democracy platform, which I have experience with, is a great tool to really engage people who can't make it to a meeting at 8:00 PM or 8:00 AM. But, you know, many of you have probably seen me door-knocking in your neighborhood right now as it's campaign time, but a year ago, way before this campaign, when we were dealing with an issue with what we're doing currently with Memorial Park and kind of going through the visioning process for that, I would have knocked on doors to get people out to those meetings too. And I believe in strict engagement. My background was as a community organizer, it was my first job out of college, and so I always fall back at bringing myself into the neighborhood. If elected, I would hold open office hours in every neighborhood. I would also meet with every single civic group on a quarterly basis, so I could be in their meetings and they could have access to me. I will be the most accessible town council member you have ever seen.
Thank you, Steve. Kate?
Well, I'm very excited about the new platform, the new civic engagement platform. I helped design it, they asked me to come in and test it out, and the exciting thing is that I've talked to women who've said to me, you know, I see you, I watch the town on the website, I watch it as I'm sitting there knitting or putting my, my baby down, and that's really great. And the new civic engagement is going to have a 24-hour, two-way, back and forth. You got questions, you got potholes, you got stuff, and it's going to be very easy to use. Now, finding other ways to meet people, yes, neighborhoods, 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 very, very important. And this will increase civic engagement, and I, I'm all for that. I think we need to talk more, talk more, talk more.
Thanks, Kate. There's a five, we're integrating questions from the audience, so just so you folks know right now. And the next one, there's a bunch of them, and I'm going to lump them together because there's some that's similar, but I'm going to read all five, and I'm going to give you a minute, but it'll be a generous minute to the timers to answer them. And we're going to start this one with Tom. It all relates to the Ross Valley Charter School and the public school. And I appreciate that the city, the town council of San Anselmo has absolutely no jurisdiction over any of the schools in the area, but despite that, it's a community issue, and we want to let the public ask questions, and they have a chance to have you have their answers. So I'll read them collectively, but one at a time. In their official capacity, San Anselmo town council members have voiced support for the Ross Valley Charter School on behalf of their constituents, as well as issues it's supported in writing. Was the appropriate, was that appropriate, in your opinion? Do you support the NAACP's call for a national honorarium on charter schools? Next, would you support the NAACP's call for a honorarium on charter schools? Next, how can you help ensure our public schools of... Next, how can you help ensure our public schools, a vital draw of new families, and revenue to our town, continue to thrive? Would you support the NAACP's moratorium on charter schools until loose laws, less local control, and transparency and discrimination issues are resolved? Do you support the NAACP in regard to a moratorium on charter schools? While the town members have previously voiced and written about their support for charter school in our district, it is now clear that the majority of the community does not want charters here. Would the town council consider supporting the NAACP's call for a moratorium on charter school expansion? Tom?
Do I have a minute?
You have a generous minute.
Okay, a generous, a generous.
I think there's a, to respect that a little bit and give a little leeway on this one.
Well, the first, I mentioned earlier, I'm a very big proponent, fan of charter schools. So one of the questions mentioned that the community is against charter schools. I certainly would disagree with that. In terms of the NAACP, I believe, did you say moratorium? Is that what you were talking about?
Well, I'm going to read it for you. Do you support the NAACP's call for a national moratorium on charter schools?
Moratorium, okay. I don't know why they're calling for that. I do not support that at all. I am for school choice. The more choice, the better. We haven't spoken about homeschooling. I would like to expand homeschooling options. We have a very high IQ populace here in San Anselmo. It's probably second only to Boston, but specifically Cambridge. So we need to take advantage of that. But I would not support that moratorium. I do support charter schools increasing. Thank you.
John?
As I mentioned earlier, I don't think my commitment to public education should be doubted after the time that I spent on school boards. I'm not sure that, I don't support a flat moratorium nationally. I think the circumstances are very different depending on what communities you're in. I think there have been examples of very successful charter schools. Many charter schools are under public oversight. So I think to just sort of, in a blanket way, say, let's have a moratorium on all of them nationally, everywhere, I don't support that either. I think there's a place for charter schools. This may not be the place, because I don't think that the charter law was really intended for the circumstances that we have in the Ross Valley. So I think we need to make some distinctions between this program here, which is the outgrowth of a 20-year-old alternative education program, and what might be going on somewhere else. That's much too broad a statement. I would not, I'd say no, I do not support a moratorium of that nature.
John, thanks. Steve?
Can you read the first part, just the first part of that question again? Because I think it was somewhat nuanced.
The one I just read, if I can, hang on. Well, the first question I asked, so let's do that one. In their official capacity, San Anselmo town council members have voiced support of the Ross Valley Charter School on behalf of their constituents, as well as issues that are supported in writing. Was the, was it appropriate, in your opinion? Do you support the NAACP's?
That's all I knew, was the first part. So, you know, I've been approached by a number of local leaders who are following the level of discourse around this issue in the community, who have asked us, all of the candidates actually, to, you know, stay out of the fray on that. And so I think, you know, with regards to that, like I said, I have my own opinions on this issue. However, I don't think it's fair for, you know, us to be asked to stay out of this discussion, but then have members of the town council voice, take a position, I should say, in this discussion. So I think that's, you know, I think that's kind of where I stand on, you know, the role. If I was the liaison to the Ross Valley schools, I would just want to make sure that we're doing exactly that. We're liaising, we're communicating, we're not necessarily advocating one way or another or trying to influence the actions of a very important issue that's, that many people care about. And so I think, you know, again, as this issue is not germane to the town council, I think that there was kind of a disconnect there.
Kate?
I'm not sure as to which town council person you're referring to. We did not, as a town council, take this up. Anybody on this council is entitled to their own personal opinions. I am a teacher in this very room. I taught at Terre Linda, I taught at Drake, I taught at Centerfell High School. My daughter-in-law is a teacher at Rancho School in Nevada. I have some very strong opinions about good public education. But I also have some different opinions about, I think Parma Devosa has just created chaos in this, in this nation about this. There is a place for charter schools. There is a place where people are not getting the education that kids deserve. And I believe that every kid needs to have her education fit her the way that she should be educated. So as to whether I agree with the NAACP overall moratorium on charter schools, no, I don't agree with that.
Thanks, Kate. Brian?
So I believe that the NAACP statement is create and enforce a rigorous charter authorizing renewal process in which districts are the only authorizers of charter schools. As a University of Chicago-trained lawyer and teacher of both international law, political science, and political theory, I do hold a deep belief that local, that a local government entity and the rule of law over whom it has jurisdiction is more legitimate and reflective of the community when it's closer to, to its decisions. That said, I'm a little confused by the NAACP position. On September 25th, the Little Rock Nine decision was celebrated, where the African-American students in Arkansas were actually allowed to attend high school. The only reason why they were allowed to enter high school was due to the intervention of federal troops. If it had relied solely on local control, they never would have gone to school. So in that regard, I find the NAACP position to be intellectually incoherent, and I cannot support their moratorium as stated.
Thanks, Brian. We're starting to wind down, so you can start to read a little bit easier, but the next question is going to start, let's see if we can start that one. So that means we're going to John. John, volunteers. Volunteers are an integral part of the town government operation, including serving on boards, commissions, coaching children, assisting at the library, and much more. What do you see as the role of volunteers in San Anselmo government? And what would you do to attract and retain more volunteers?
Well, we are very fortunate in San Anselmo in having a fantastic body of volunteers that participate at really every level. And I think it's, I would say, a bit of a hallmark of the town, that we have numerous commissions and bodies and advisory boards that really provide an incredible amount of great input to not only the town council, but actually to improving the quality of life in the community. So I think one thing we can do to ensure that we continue to attract them is have, ensure that the town council itself comports itself in a civilized way, as we generally do. I think we've been actually pretty good in San Anselmo compared to some neighboring towns that I won't mention. So that we actually do it, but people do want to do things for the town. And I think we're, and Kate will, I'm sure, talk about this, and she was instrumental years ago in organizing the volunteers, and we were benefiting from that today.
Steve?
This is an issue that's near and dear to my heart. And I think it goes without saying that I know at least four of us here have been active town volunteers for a while, and everybody who serves on a town commission or board or in some capacity is, you know, in that realm. And I think that's one of the things that makes San Anselmo so special. Every year, the Parks and Rec Commission, we do Earth Day cleanup at Memorial Park. In years past, we've painted the Isabel Cook Center, we've stained the Millennium Playground, we did a whole garden project this year and whole park cleanup on Earth Day. And the number of volunteers that come out to the community, whether it's the master gardeners, the people from the church, it's just phenomenal to see that. And I think that's one of the great opportunities we have here in San Anselmo, is the ability to harness the passion and the talent in our community and put them to work, helping to make our town better. And I think that's something that I've really enjoyed being involved with over the last 10 years in San Anselmo, and something that I hope to be a little more involved with as a member of the town council.
Thanks, Steve. Kate?
As many of you know, I was a volunteer coordinator in San Anselmo for 10 years, almost 10 years. And we had multiple boards and commissions, as we still do today. One of the best things about it is that we have youth serving on our boards and commissions now. And it's just, it's a terrific thing. They bring a whole different aspect to each meeting. But one thing I found out as the volunteer coordinator is that everybody wants to give a little bit, but you have to go out and ask. They're not, they're not going to know that they have to come to you. You say to them, you know what? I need you just, on Saturday morning, I just need you to help me mark the street for about, oh, an hour. Or I need you to help me hose down the street. Or I need you to come and help build. People are waiting to be asked, and that's the, that's the really great thing about. Don't forget about the historical tours that the Historical Commission is giving too. Thank you.
Thanks, Kate. Brian?
You're on repeating the question.
Sure, absolutely. It's about volunteerism, basically. And after the preamble, the real question is, what do you see as the role of volunteers in San Anselmo government? And what would, what do you suggest the city or the town do to attract and retain volunteers?
Well, I think the role of volunteers is essential. I think it's one of the differentiators, is the active community of volunteers that we have. I think the way to attract them is simply go out and engage with people on a personal level, find out what they're interested in, and connect with them, and build a team. To me, it's sort of like building a company. You know, how do you match their interests and their passions with the needs of the town? And you can only do that by connecting with them on a real level and saying, why did you come to San Anselmo? What are those, what are those talents that you're using now? Or what are the talents that you aren't able to use in your current life? And how can you bring them forward to the town? Or very often, as Economic Development Committee, people say, you know, I wish, I wish the town had this. And I'm saying, well, you know, no one's stopping you from starting it. I think one of the really great things about Downtown Economic Vitality is that a number of the, the number of the business owners are being started by women, women, and men that actually live in the community.
Thanks, Brian. Tom?
Thank you. We need to, is this on? Hello?
Yes.
If you could adjust the time, thank you. We need, volunteerism is critical in all, in all communities, but I especially think we do need to engage our young people. I'm the only one here who wants to lower the voting age. I want to lower it to 15. I believe in our young people. I believe in their passion, their energy, their vitality, and most of all, their intellect. I think they can do more engagement, we can do more engagement with our youth, but not at just minor, you know, volunteer jobs like cleanups, which are important. But we can also engage our high school seniors to work at Town Hall, get more involved in politics. They are so disconnected from politics, it's shameful, and they're involved in a virtual world of social media, and politics is a reality. It affects their lives and their family's lives. I think they can get more involved in the legislative process, they can get involved in ballot measures. I think it's very disappointing we don't have any ballot measure this year. I think every election year, we should have at least two or three. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. We're going to start with, we're winding down, this is the second to last questions. And it's a topic we haven't talked about before, it's low-income housing is the topic. And we're going to start with Steve, I think, this time. And Steve, the question is, what steps, if any, will you initiate in order to create more affordable housing and services for low-income families in San Anselmo?
Well, one thing I think I would certainly support is the annexation of second units. You know, when we look at San Anselmo, we look at a limited amount of space in terms of building real property. So we need to be smarter about it. I think, you know, annexation of second units is something that gets us there. However, my concerns are just making sure that these units retain the public safety aspects of code enforcement, such as fire suppression. I think that's, that's personally very important. If we're ever going to do anything about affordable housing in San Anselmo, we first need to improve the public transportation on that east-west corridor. If that doesn't happen, there's really no use, because we'd be bringing more people into town, but putting, we're just putting more cars on the road. We need to do the thing, we need to take a holistic approach at addressing this. But at the moment, annexation of second units, I think, is something that could get some of the people that are working in our businesses that aren't afford, aren't able to afford to live here, to be able to be in town.
Thanks, Steve. Kate?
We had a, we had a discussion today at the IJ endorsements about what is affordable housing? What is it? Who is it? Affordable housing has many definitions. And we talked about perhaps it's one for teachers and firefighters to be able to live in town. But I serve on what is called CDBG, excuse me, Community Development Block Grants. And those are what deal with affordable housing, HUD grants, for building affordable housing and for repairing housing that we have, senior housing is lacking. Today, on my website, I posted the notice that if you are seeking a HUD grant for developing housing or for repairing your home, now is the time to apply at the county. So I sit on that committee and I see what comes through. And it's a tough, tough question.
Brian, thanks, Kate.
Yeah, I'll let Kate's comment in terms of, it's really important to sort of talk about what is affordable housing. Any number of people in San Anselmo are concerned that their children won't be able to live near them, or their parents won't be able to live near them, or other members of the community that they deeply care about. And again, you know, San Anselmo is here in Marin, outside of San Francisco, and I don't think that job engine is going to slow down any soon. I know that the police authority has had trouble recruiting officers because they can no longer afford to live here. And I think all, everyone would strongly believe that it's great when police officers and firefighters and teachers and all, all other service workers, public service sectors workers can live in the community. Given that we don't have a lot of real property, however, I think in the short term, second units and junior in-laws as a policy initiative is certainly probably the short-term way we can look to examine and relieve some of those pressures. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks. I don't think second units is affordable, will be affordable. I think the prices will be quite high. But we have to ask ourselves, they're asking, we're being asked the question because we don't already have affordable housing. So the real question is, why don't we? And perhaps Marin County doesn't want it. I believe, I'm the only renter on the panel, perhaps maybe, maybe in the past few town council leadership roles. But we're, you know, we need a senior housing project for longtime residents. And we also need, as I mentioned before, a public-private partnership. These are just smaller units, two or three bedrooms, so families can come there. And the price per square foot would be the same market rate. So I think that will attract a lot of people. You know, the definition of affordable is, again, it's very, it's very contentious because it's quite high to be a renter in, here in San Anselmo. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. John?
Right, I think as we were talking about earlier, affordable housing, San Anselmo, I think the town now is actually quite receptive to proposals for low-income housing. The problem is there just isn't a lot of places to build, and it's just not economic in many cases. I think, to me, affordable housing really ought to be approached, at least in Marin County, on more of a regional basis. I think we'd achieve more by collaborating with some of our local towns and kind of addressing it on more of a kind of, kind of a collaboration, coalition basis, because each town is so small, and it's so difficult, I think, for staff of each town to analyze these proposals. And we would, there'd be a lot more progress, I think, if we were to combine with Ross, Greenbray, Kentfield, Fairfax, and come up with sort of a more localized approach that would, I think, solve the problem more effectively than each town trying to do its own thing, particularly in these small towns.
Thanks, Tom. Last question comes from the audience, and it's an appropriate last question. And we're going to start with Kate. What is your chief objective in running for council? What do you want to accomplish? What's your chief objective in running for council?
My chief objective is to bring the community together, is to focus on community in whatever ways that is. It's working with downtown businesses, it's working with the schools, it's working with the council, it's working with affordable housing. Whatever we can do to... the council, it's working with affordable housing, whatever we can do to continue to focus on building community. It's why we moved here. That's why people stand out in front of Town Hall, and I'll say, how long you been in town? I say, oh, we've been here three years, and we just love it. And I'll say, well, why do you like it? Say, oh, we like all the things that you do. We like all the festivals, and we like all the, we like all the parades and everything. It's a real community. And that's what I want to do. I want to continue to do that.
Thanks, Kay. Brian.
I want to connect the young families, parents of school-aged children, with the rest of the stakeholders in town, and then begin to execute and address on some of the opportunities and challenges. I, I think community is interesting. I think consensus is sometimes an excuse for inaction. And I think the community sort of wants to move forward on a number of challenges. And I think I can listen, and I think I can lead, that we can address the challenge, have a legitimacy around the process, so that we can continue to move on to the next. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Or Tom.
Thanks. I would like to bring term limits. I think that's critical, locally, statewide, and on a federal level. Term limits of one term only. This will bring a new energy and a positive energy to our government, and people will be more engaged in the process. We have 13,000 people here approximately, there's only 80 of you here. Brave souls, thank you so much for coming. There might be a few hundred more who watch this on YouTube. It's not democracy. Democracy is where 80, 70, 80% of the people are engaged all the time, talking all the time, calling, or calling the town council and vice versa, the town council's reaching out to people. We need to open up and expand our democracy. Four years is a long time. In the private sector, it's about five jobs and two careers. Of a hard worker, I can get a lot done in four years. Thank you.
Thank you. John.
I know my wife would be in support of Mr. King's proposal on term limits, because she'd like, she's, she's getting tired. So she got her, you got her vote. I've got, I've got a few more tangible goals in terms of actually getting things done. We have some very specific things that we're trying to do in San Anselmo. We have a Memorial Park master plan that's nearing approval, it's coming to the council at the end of October. We have more work to do on roads and medians. You know, we have a, we had to pass the sales tax, and we have a pretty significant capital improvement plan that we need to accomplish. We need to implement some of the actions proposed by the Economic Development Council to provide a framework for successful business downtown. We've got the need for public input on the marijuana issue. So there's several specific things. I think one of the trouble, we don't want to lose focus on the things we need to accomplish.
Thank you, John.
So top priority was the question?
Well, what's your priority?
So first and foremost, to bring people together. Doesn't matter the issue that we're talking about, infrastructure, flooding, economic vitality. If we can, we cannot accomplish any of that if we can't do it together. We need to address our roads and infrastructure, we need to address flood mitigation and economic vitality. But if we're truly going to keep San Anselmo vibrant, family-friendly, and safe, we need to do it together. I'm proud of the work my colleagues and I have done on the Parks and Rec Commission to bring people together, people who don't always agree to do things like come out and clean up the park, or, or paint the Isabel Cook Center. It's in those opportunities that we get to know each other better as community members and as, as people who make up the fabric of our community. And when you have those discussions, whether it's about the 49ers, or the Raiders, or the Giants, or the A's, while you're doing those things, you form that community. I want us to do more of that, and I would certainly do that as a member of the town council.
Alberto, thank you. Time to finish up now, and we're going to have two minutes from each of you to tell the folks here, who are watching from afar, why you should be elected San Anselmo Town Council. And we started on the left side, and then finish up on the right side. Tom King.
Thank you. And thank you again for coming. We appreciate it. Our democracy has a serious flaw. It's one which perhaps only someone objective and new to government can identify and take note of. San Anselmo, like thousands of towns and cities across the nation, does not pay its town council members. It's a volunteer position. Think about it, the most important job in town, being a member of its elected ruling body, is unpaid. So who can apply for a volunteer job? Only people with money and/or those with a great deal of time, some are retired, very flexible schedule, etc. Well, that leaves out about 80% of our population. That's not democracy. Let's expand our local democracy by making the town council a modestly paid job, so that all of us can have the option to run for local public office. Our Congress has about a 5% approval rating, but a 95% reelection rate. There's a big disconnect there. Also, about 94% of every election, local, state, federal, local, state, county, federal, 94% of all elections are won by the candidate who has or spends the most money. That's not democracy either. It's hard to get money out of politics when money is politics. Money can also be the reason, it may also be the reason why I may not win this election. I've run out of it, you see. Unless I receive campaign donations, I cannot put yard signs or door hangers up, so, since I can't afford to buy them. If you support my campaign and my ideas, please consider making a donation to help me, keep me in the running. Thank you for your consideration. Please visit my website, tomking2017.com, for all my ideas and my platform. Thank you very much.
Tom King, thank you. John.
Thanks. Well, as I mentioned earlier, I think we're fortunate this year in having several really good candidates. I think San Anselmo will be in good hands regardless of who's elected. I'm hoping that I'll be reelected, because I think I have a lot more to contribute to the town. I, I know the players very well, I know what the issues are, I know how to get things done. I certainly agree with many of the comments made about needing to bring people together and have more engagement. We can't really accomplish these things that are going to require, in many cases, going to voters for additional funding without a lot of consensus on some of these tough issues. I think our, some of our biggest issues are around the aging infrastructure in the town. We're making some headway on that, on the roads and medians, because voters were willing to tax themselves to do that. If we're going to make progress that we need to make on things like Memorial Park renovation, there's several million dollars of work that's needed at Memorial Park to really bring that up to current standards. There's, there's safety hazards there, it's a worn-down place. That also is going to require voters agreeing to pay for that. So it's absolutely the case that, you know, we can't impose these things from the top down, and we need to, we need to get, we need to find a way to get citizens engaged in the difficult work of local government. I mean, it's, it's a grind most of the time, and most people simply don't have the patience to sit through meetings. We need to do a better job, often, I think, on our council agendas, to be sure that we don't have controversial, difficult issues late in the evening. All those things need to be done, so I'm confident that whoever's elected will be able to do that, and I'm optimistic about a bright next three years in town.
All right, thank you. Steve Berlo.
Thank you all so much for coming out tonight. It's so great to see so many people here. Look, every day, we wake up and we put on our superhero capes and masks and try to go about life as best we can. And every single day, our lives intersect with local government, whether it's the pothole on the road, or the traffic impacts that make you worried about being late to pick up a kid or a loved one, or if you're just a business owner, simply worrying about if you have to deal with the impacts of flooding this winter. These are the issues we deal with every single day. What residents want in their local officials is to know that they've got their back, and that's why I'm running for San Anselmo Town Council. I want to get your back. I bring over a decade of service to the town in a passion and a belief in local government. I believe community is very much alive in San Anselmo, and I want to be an even greater part of that. I have a strong record of bringing diverse stakeholders and people who don't always get along together to address complex issues. I see y'all out there, which I believe is demonstrated by the broad range of groups and individuals who have endorsed my campaign, including council members Tom McInerney and Ford Green, former council members Carla Overberger and Doug Kelly, Supervisor Katie Rice, Assembly Member Mark Levine, a host of local San Anselmo leaders. I'm proud to have been endorsed by the Marin Professional Firefighters and the Marin Association of Realtors, and I am extremely proud to be the only candidate endorsed by the Marin Democratic Party, the Sierra Club, the Marin Women's Political Action Committee, and the Marin County Young Democrats. Look, we are building a movement that looks towards the future of San Anselmo. This isn't about me or any one of us, this is about what we can do together. I invite you to join us at berlofansananselmo.com, and I respectfully ask for your vote in this town council election. Thank you.
Steve Berlo, thank you. Kay Coleman.
I just want to straighten one thing out. We are paid. My take-home pay is $277 a month, okay? So we are paid. No one knows better, no one knows San Anselmo better than I do. I've lived here and worked here a long, long time. We have a lot of challenges in San Anselmo to deal with. We've got roads and traffic and the Memorial Park situation. I've been mayor twice, and I've worked with every department in town, and I've been a part of the strategic planning for 2012. In addition, I've helped design the new participatory website. I'm proud that I have founded many events that focus on community and families. The Leadership Program here at Drake High School, The Beatles in the Park, The Goblins Parade, Creekside Q, Friday Night Picnics on the Plaza, Senior Vincent, and I even threw out the first pitch at the Pacific Stadium several times, so there. I show up and I work hard. I'm engaged. I ask you to visit my Facebook page and my website, kaycolemanforcouncil.com. I would appreciate your vote on November 7th or by mail. And I really want to thank the chamber for this opportunity. And Dick, thank you for coming, and thanks all of you for coming and being engaged.
Kay Coleman, thanks to you. Brian Colbert.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the chamber. I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. I'd like to thank everyone that I met during the campaign, especially those that have pushed me to immerse myself in the community and not be afraid to engage with everyone. I'd like to thank everyone, some of whom are in the audience tonight, that pushed me to up my game, challenge my own assumptions, and work harder. I'd personally like to thank Debbie Stutzman, who's not here tonight. When I became chair of the San Anselmo EDC four years ago, Debbie helped me become an effective chair, and she taught me the processes of government and policy here in San Anselmo. I can only aspire to conduct myself with her humility and respect for the community. Since my family moved to San Anselmo, I've strived to act with integrity in all my community interactions, whether it's chairing the EDC, volunteering in my daughter's classroom, or knocking on doors. I believe I can and have bridged and connected a broad spectrum of stakeholders, everyone from parents of school-aged children, to the business community, to everyone else. I'm not an incumbent, I'm not a longtime political operative. I'm an entrepreneur, I'm a father of a school-aged child. I believe I'm a strong and open listener, I want to lean, and do a try for the community I love. Thank you.
Brian Colbert, thank you. And thank all five of you for being just terrific candidates tonight, and it's really an impressive list. We've seen them all the paper, and this is a, I really applaud. But a big turnout tonight, it's a hot topic at San Anselmo. I want to mention that there are three seats up for election. You get to vote for three candidates, you're five candidates, but you get to cast three votes. And one candidate, not a candidate, one incumbent is stepping down. I believe he's still here tonight, but it's hard to see. Tom McInerney was here. Tom, are you here? I want to thank Tom for his service on the council. He's retiring, and thus, there's three seats, it's five candidates. It's a pleasure to be here. Don't forget to keep reading your independent journals.
Oh, no, well, thank you all. If you'll just allow me to remind you, the election day is November 7th. I want to thank the other members of the Chamber of Commerce for helping with this event, especially tonight, Greg Davis and Jay Luther, who are our timekeepers. It's not really a fun job, you can't really pay much attention, so I appreciate it. I want to thank Dick for coming in and moderating, Steve Nessel for filming this, and for those of you who are interested and have friends, this will be on YouTube, the title will be San Anselmo Town Council 2017. It'll be on in about two days. I'd like to especially thank Cyrus Thalen, Peter Cho, and Jonah from Drake High School, who have set this light for night, their lights are on. And thank you all very much. Lastly, I want to say that I've been coming to these debates since 2011, and some people have come and gone, but we are over 100, over 100 people in this room, and that is by far the most we've ever had. I want to thank you all very much. An engaged voter is a knowledgeable voter, and that's what we need. Thank you all very much, and good night.